All right then, so let's go on to the regular meeting of Town Council. So, anything to add on to the agenda? Nothing more? Fine. All right, so we have a resolution to... Councilor Laverbeet resolved that the closed meeting be called to an end so that we can return to a regular meeting of Town Council. Seconded by Councilor Simonno. All those in favor, thank you. Now, there was a resolution that was voted upon. Be resolved that Town Council accept the hiring of Malcolm Duncan on a full-time basis as urban planner and that he be subjected to probationary period for a period of six months and be resolved that his salary be pegged at level one of Class 5 salary grid of unionized employees as recommended. Seconded then by Councilor Laverbeet. All those in favor, carried. Thank you. All right, let's go on now to announcements. I just wanted to say one thing. Friday evening, we attended Le Partage. There was a show that was presented at the Optimists Town Hall. I thought it was fantastic to see the talents we have in this area. Singers, dancers. It was for good cause. It was to raise funds for the food bank here. We also had the fundraising activity that was organized by the local parish yesterday. Saint Pascal raised funds through its parish also for $3,000. Great for a small village like this. Councilor LaLonde? Yes, on the 13th of December next at the Optimists Performance Hall, there will be a very important meeting for Highway 17, 174 project. Everyone is invited. We hope to have 200 individuals attend that particular meeting because it's of great concern for the future of our municipality. And with regards to the Rockland fundraising activity organized by our parish, we raised $19,700 plus a great deal of canned goods. I know that people were quite generous because I believe that we doubled the amount of food that we obtained as compared to last year and even more money than last year. So, other announcements? That's it then, thank you. Thank you very much, folks. Let's go on now to next item on the agenda. Let's go on to question period. If you have any questions to Town Council, step up to the mic. We ask you to give us your name and address. Mrs. LaRouze, please don't shy away from stepping up to the mic. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I usually am very... But I'm very shy. Look, we're going to visit the path that's close to your place there in January, not to worry. Well, my name is Suzanne Drouet. I'm from Burjette, Mr. Mayor, and I'm the chairperson of the Burjette Embellishment Committee. Of course, you've had occasion to see us in the past. Mrs. Chantal Burel, the last time around, addressed to Council. Now, tonight, we're just wondering if you've come up with an answer with regards to our mural project that would be implemented on the Mike Dean store on the walls there. As things stand, last... I can tell you that last week, that particular item was not on the budget. We were compelled to initiate a lot of cuts during the budget process. I have no idea right now as to where we stand. I'm sure that employees and folks present right now will come up with means to help you out, but we had to implement cuts during the budget process. But one can hope, ma'am. One can hope that we can come up with money somewhere along the line sooner or later. Justine Leroux, 108 Livy Street in Burjette, K0A180. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ma'am. I addressed Town Council a few months ago and I asked you if within your budget process you had an item or a page, whatever the financial jargon corresponds to what I'm talking about, is with regards to the embellishment of our area here, of our city. I find it unfortunate that the city of Clarence and Rockland does not have a heading that deals with... financial heading that deals with the embellishment of the city of Clarence and Rockland. And I'm not just talking about our project, but general embellishment. Let's throw up a figure, let's say $20,000 with regards to this heading and one can dip into $2,000 or $3,000 depending on the project that's contemplating. Maybe for the 2018 budgetary talks, next year's budgetary round of talks, we might have a financial heading or financial envelope set aside for embellishment. I spoke to my fellow councilors or respect to my friends at Town Council and at Town Hall. One told me that his intent is not to hang around all that often, but this being said, you will receive a request on my behalf that this be done for the next round of budgetary talks in 2018. I know you've handled all of the financial matters up to now for the 2017. However, I'm just asking if a financial envelope designated as finances for the city of Clarence and Rockland's embellishment, things as... As... Or our area, you know, the Saint Pascal or Hammond or Burjette areas because people travel by down there. I already have an ongoing project along with the Canada Post in Burjette to embellish a few parts of our area. So, if the municipal budget could take into account a small budgetary item within its grand budget for embellishment in the future. Well, of course, the project you referred to dealt with a county road that ran through Burjette. Well, let's keep hope and come up... No, I know, Mr. Mayor. If you can maybe think of... I've... I know that I talked at length with Mr. Keogh. Don't worry. He talks to me at length, ma'am, about his favorite senators, his favorite senators hockey team. By the way, on the 8th of January, you're all invited, you're all invited to attend in the afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. to attend the special function in our area. My goal was to deal with 20 trees. I've had 42 trees instead that were tagged. Trees that families and individuals adopted and decorated. How much did that cost them? Nothing at all. We just want nothing at all. It was free of charge and our recreational path is great. There's some solar lights that were installed that were just purchased or that shall be installed very soon. Some individuals told me that they'll be present at the event that I alluded to, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., hot chocolate, campfires, music. Well, watch out now, campfires. I have to be wary about this. We requested for a campfire at that time. I don't know if we'll get it or not, but in any event, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your attention and for hearing me out. The 8th of January, right? Yes, that's right, the 8th. Good evenings. My name is Andrée Chalabois, Mr. Mayor, 995 Belvedere Street in Rockland. And my name is Jean Robert Legay, 503 Jewisso in Rockland. Now, both of us are here representing the Junior A Hockey Team that will be playing here next year. And I'm wondering if there's a decision taken on the ice rink time that will be called upon to pay and the ice rink time that will be allowed to us. Sir? Well, we're going to ask Town Council to revisit this issue this coming January with regards to the Junior A Hockey Team and its requests so we can enter into lengthy discussions then. Well, we don't have much detail right now as to your requests, sir, but I can tell you that we'll make you aware of our decision as to this and you're more than welcome to attend when we deal with this at greater length. Mr. Mayor, we talked about the availability of ice rink time and I believe that everyone here received comparables in Carlton Place, 103, they pay 104, Kentville 182, Smith Falls $120, Pembroke 145, Hawksbury 141. Those are prices paid elsewhere. Having negotiated an agreement with another municipality myself, there's a lot of in-kind. That's manpower that's supplied by individual municipalities, if you wish, and other help that's offered in kind because they do know, everyone knows, that a Junior A Hockey Team is a good publicity vehicle for the city of Clarence and Rockland. Well, I'm sure we'll obtain all of those needed requirements and information in January when we enter into greater detail discussions then as to this. Any other questions for Town Council? Well, that's fine then. Let's continue on, shall we? Next item. Councilor Simonno be resolved that Town Council directs the Director of Protection and Property to revise the parking bylaw to allow overnight parking when less than seven centimeters of snow is forecasted. Seconded by Councilor Ari. Questions? Well, I think it's a great idea. If it's seven centimeters and our trucks are compelled to go out when it's five centimeters that are forecasted that we adjusted accordingly, well, get no functions on that basis when Environment Canada predicts it between five to a 10-centimeter snowball. I'm sorry, I just mentioned that the resolution states 10 centimeters, you know, or seven centimeters, should I say, to allow parking at night. I just want to make sure that if our trucks leave at five, that our resolution is going to reflect less than five because if the trucks decide to come out, you know, vehicles should not be on the street then, right? That's right. Well, that's what we try to do. Yes. Well, that's what we try to do, but that doesn't mean that this is what's going to happen. But if you do have a bylaw however that states, well, don't park after seven and the trucks come out at five, it's still not seven. You know, you want a bylaw if you need to enforce a bylaw, how do you go about doing this then? Well, I don't want to be contrary, even though I can be sometimes, but let's say that last night, for example, they advertised two centimeters, but we obtained 10. Look, Mr. Mayor, yesterday in Ottawa, people had their right to park everywhere along the Ottawa streets and in Gatineau streets. Unfortunately, in Environment Canada, the Environment Canada forecast, well, you know, we received a bit more snow from God than usual, but then it wasn't the end of the world. Everybody went to work this morning and... Well, anyways, I believe it's a major change. A lot of cities continue to prohibit overnight parking. It's a good... We have to take a serious look at this. Well, look, it's a resolution that I've come up with. If it meets with your assent, that's fine. I think that we have to be a bit modernistic in our thinking and follow along with the flow. Follow the flow. Well, the recommendation, Dave, that you came up with? Well, I'm just trying to get the context of the discussion here. Look, there's a proposal to amend our current practices? Yes, let's say if it doesn't snow for a week, Dave, people can't park on the street at night. And I'm saying why? Now, if there's a forecast and usually Environment Canada specifies in... That, let's say, it's between five and 10, well, then it's too bad you don't park on the street at night. That's what the bylaws state. Well, probably then like an Ottawa model. Yeah, like an Ottawa model or exactly like the city of Gatineau model and it works. It doesn't, you know, like last year, for example, we had snow on the 29th of December. That was the first snow. Now, people couldn't park for a month and a half on the street without seeing one darn snowflake and it was 20 degrees outside. You know? That's all I'm trying to impart to you, to make you aware of. So, somebody will come up or come back with a report on this. I'm just saying that it's hard for me to come up with a recommendation. That's right. The only recommendation we have... Well, we don't have any trouble analyzing the pros and cons and coming up with a recommendation to you. Well, thank you then. All those in favor, carried. Be it also resolved that Town Council authorize a prolongation for Diane Schoignard, our Town Councillor, until the 31st of March 2017. Seconded by Councilor Zandt. Any questions? All those in favor, carried then. Thank you. Consent items. Are there any consent items that you wish to withdraw from the usual list of consent items? None? Well then, if you'll allow me to read this, be resolved that the following items identified under consent items set on today's agenda of the regular meeting of Town Council held on the 5th of December 2016. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. 10.1a, regular meeting of Town Council held on the 21st of November 2016. B, meeting of the Committee of the Whole on November 21st, 2016. And C, Committee of the Whole meeting of the 22nd of November, 2016. And D, meetings of the Committee of the Whole meeting of the 23rd of November, 2016. And E, minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting of the 29th of November, 2016. 10.2, receipt of the following meetings, of the minutes of the following meetings. A, minutes of the Clarence and Rockland Public Library Board meeting held on the 27th of October, 2016. 10.3, following recommendations stemming from the Committee of the Whole of the 21st of November, 2016. A, request to make use of the Optimists Performance Hall free of charge. B, request for partnership with regards to the Country Music Festival. 10.4, salaries paid. Seconded by Councilor Simonno. All those in favor then? All those in favor? Yes, carried then, thank you. We have to... We are compelled to register those who are in favor because the favor, the fact that we haven't withdrawn any items from the agenda means that we are in favor. It seems to me, it seems to me that this request to raise one's hand is redundant. Well, you can all choose to reject them also. I understand what you're saying. But if we don't withdraw any items, it means that we are consenting that all of these items... Well, it seems to me that it's redundant, but sometimes we like to be redundant. Well, in other municipalities, they have to go by consent in individual items. It's even worse, so we've streamlined the project. Item 11, Committee Reports, Accounts Paid. Be resolved that the accounts payable for the period of the 8th of October until the 11th of November, 2016, the amount of $3,827,646.53 be adopted as recommended. Seconded by Councilor Grimaud. Any questions? Councilor Grimaud? I'll speak before Councilor LaLonde on page three under item 1-1-0145. Ivy Leadership Program, $9,250. Can I be enlightened as to this, Mrs. Collier? You'll recall that during our budget process, we'd recommended sending one of our employees on a management training course. We put up this employee for many courses. The courses were canceled. Finally, this one, this one provided the training we needed. So, this program is offered in March of this year. It's taken a year to find an adequate program. They've canceled. We've registered this person three times now and this is the Engineering Operations Manager that's involved. All right, Mr. Mayor, page 26 of the documents. We have training in Toronto for $1,400 under street lighting training. I just want to know what happens afterwards? Is there a report that we received from the person involved so that we can have a plan to implement that strategy? It's great to send somebody off on training, but can you explain to us as to what happens when somebody goes off on training like that? Well, I had occasion to talk to the individual that went on this and, and I don't think there was any report back to anyone with respect as to what was learned in that, but I think that you're going to see the benefits in this, in our conversion program. You know, we have $800,000 for the LED conversion program. Now, when I spoke to the individual here, there was a lot of discussion about the different types of lighting, under what circumstances you use them. So, I think you're going to see the benefit as to what that person learns. It will manifest itself in that conversion program because in the LEDs, there are four different classifications of lighting. You use some when sidewalks are involved, you use some others when other conditions are involved. So, certainly, we could ask the person to summarize, you know, what they picked up, but I think you'll see those real times where we benefit isn't the program in itself. Well, that's fine. Fine. Page 34 of our electronic document, I believe that Mr. Simonno sent it. We had a repair with regards to a mower related item of $5,600. Yes, yes. Unfortunately, here, we rented a mower. Let me explain. And in carrying out the operation, the operator, I think, was in some longer grass and whatnot, hit a boulder and that damaged the main axle on the mower and it was necessary to get it repaired. Now, it was a fairly significant, you know, piece of work that needed to be done. That's why the price is fairly steep, but I'm not sure how you'll go about doing this in many instances, you know, you hit upon long grass or heavy brush and something then can be hit when you're dealing with this, if you see it or if you've walked around the grounds that need to be mowed beforehand. Yeah, well, anyways, that's what happened in this instance. There were some lessons learned in this, you know, on behalf of our... Of course, you know, when you work those ditches on Wilson Street, oh, I've seen those ditches. Last week, Mr. Mayor, page 44 of our electronic document, ICAS Edge, that was built for daycare at $7,000. Do we know the size of the shed? It's a 10 by 10 shed, so that amount of money for a 10 by 10 shed, yes, but we needed a cement slab to straighten the two main doors, two windows, and also we needed to bring it up to spec because it was located in front of the school. We obtained the three pair prices from the purchasing agent. That was the lowest one. Carrefour-Joness was one... Was what is... Well, they're involved in that. Was it not made by the county? No, it was taken out by the cap... Out of the capital budget, Mr. Mayor. I see. Councilor Laverbeet? I'm just wondering, what is a high Q container at $2,800? I'm just wondering what this is. That would be on page 27 involving Cohen and Cohen. A high Q container. What? It must be a shipping container. Well, I believe it is a shipping container, but I'm wondering what we use it for. It's a high Q type of container. I don't understand what that means. If you'll allow us a bit of time, I'll come up with a response for that. I'll send it to all Council. Fine. Any other questions? Councilor LaLonde? Yes. Page 11. Page 11. The Canadian Institute. There are two courses offered at $1,976 each. These courses are offered to our employees. Canadian Institutes, that's for infrastructure assets, for asset management, Councilor LaLonde. We sent to our two employees that are dedicated to asset management to a training program in Toronto. Where? In Toronto? Yes. It was organized by MCTO. I just can't remember, but that does not include the per diem, does it? No, it does not. That's just a registration fee. Well, I have another one. Dylan Consulting on the same page, 26,000. That deals with the master plan, Councilor LaLonde. Oh, I see. Thank you then. And the last one that I have is Reconstruction St. Joseph on page 36. I'm sorry, $16,000. Yes, I stand corrected. $16,000. Did we have to rework the initial tender process? Could you please repeat that, Councilor LaLonde? Which line item are we dealing with here? Oh, this one here. WSB Canada Inc. Oh, that's to redo the... It's to redo the tender process that we'd initially entered into? Well, when are we going to go from the estimate stage? Well, not the estimate stage, well, dealing with the contract? Well, I'll be bringing a report forward to the Committee of the Whole Council on the 19th. You know, reflecting departmental recommendations. That's all I had. Any other questions then? All those in favor? Carried? That's fine, thank you. User fees for water and sewer services. Be resolved that bylaw 2016-31 being a bylaw to modify user fees for water and sewers and other fees for the year 2017 and to replace appendix A of bylaw 2016-15 be adopted. Seconded by Councilor LaLonde. Any questions? Councilor LaLonde? They may not know the answer right off the bat, but that's okay. How come the annual fixed rate fee for sewer is cheaper than water, but the consumption charge is the other way around? It seems odd. Your fixed rate for sewer seem, would seem to be higher than your fixed rate for sewer for water because the consumption rate again is, is the other way around. Well, that's a good question. Look, look, gentlemen, for now, this is based on the methodology that we've been using in the past. We've been reviewing, as you know, in the past, our practices, but you can alter either fee to bring in the same revenue. In other words, in other words, you can reduce your fix and increase your variables. There's no rocket science to it. If you recall last year, Mr. Mayor, we showed you many comparisons of other municipalities and quite frankly, it's all over the map between the variable and fixed rates between the municipalities. So, well, the city of Ottawa went through this last year trying to decide what a fair fixed fee would be. So, in Clarence and Rockland, in its history, the fixed fee was to try to recover the capital costs and the debt payments that were there. So, we'll go back and have a look at the theory behind the calculation of the charge, but historically, that was what the fixed fee was tied to. I see. There's a monthly fee of $56 per unit for peoples that, people that don't have meters. Do we know how many people actually in the city don't have those meters and is there a plan somewhere, somehow, to actually put meters onto those properties? Well, that's a question that I'll have to come back to because I don't have the number right off at the top of my head there. Well, I'm guessing that with the calculation involved with the $56 fixed fee, generally it relates to a household, you know, a normal household of an average size would consume. Well, it's an average number. I think we looked into this last year and I believe that there are just over 100 units that have this fixed fee, but we'll look into that. Councilor Zandt? Mr. Keogh, last year, after the water invoice invoicing announcements that were made last year, you said, well, don't worry, you know, this will be subjected to a slight increase of two per two or five per two percent increase, but we've... of two per, two or five, two percent increase, but we've encountered a two percent increase and then a five point five percent increase. I mean, if it continues, if we continue contemplating five point five percent increases each and every year? Well, Mr. Year, Mr. Mayor, I must say this, we took a look at the prevalent situation then, but we had the additional increases with regards to sewer services that had not yet been identified. So this is the average that we've come up with for the next few years, two or three percent. You know, we're dealing here with infrastructures, Mr. Mayor, that are difficult to look into as to potential costs in the future, as, you know, borne out by the Laurier Street situation, for example. We don't know sometimes, given the costs involved, in what physical state the assets are in. In my view, we're dealing with a three percent increase, but we'll have to review the whole process in two years from now to determine how much money we have in the bank to tackle the water and sewer problems that arise from time to time. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm surprised to note that people have drinking water services that have no meters. I thought there was an existing bylaw that compelled them to have a, a water. What, Mr. Keogh will look into that. Well, you see, it says here that a flat consumption charged at fifty-six dollars a month. Well, that's very cheap. A flat user fee fifty-six dollars a month for drinking water if you don't have a meter affixed to your home. And then there's an annual fee of a hundred and forty-eight dollars for water and fifty-nine dollars or fifty-eight dollars for consumption. Close to eight hundred dollars per year. The other question I had was this, Mr. Mayor. Sanitary sewer fees deal with three properties. Is it, are those properties owned by Clarence and Rockland? I believe so. They are owned, those properties. Yes, that's a system that was put in by the city years ago and those residents have completely paid back the cost of those, of that particular system. Those are operational costs relating to this particular subject system. It depends on the size of the property. Well, it was set down by town council based upon a formula. I don't recall the formula offhand, but it dealt with that property. Well, look, it was tax assessment. It was that portion relating to tax assessment, in any event, that came into play. All right, all right, that's fine. I'd just like to obtain a bit of clarification on some matters because we'll be talking about new rates pretty soon and I'm just trying to get a grasp as to what happened with the old Village West situation. We know that guy that bottles water. Has that ever been resolved? No, it's in the process of being resolved. Mr. Carré was involved. Mr. Darch has not had the occasion to speak to that gentleman yet. The one who's, Mr. Lompre, who's in charge of the project, has not entered, entered into any formal discussions with us yet. Well, that's fine then. All those in favor? Carried. Let's go on now to item eleven point three. The two thousand and seventeen budget. Beat resolved that bylaw two thousand sixteen dash one fifty-seven being a bylaw to adopt the two thousand and seventeen budget be adopted. Seconded by Counselor Zant. Any questions? Counselor Zant? Well, Mr. Mayor, you gave explanations beforehand as to the adoption of the budget. We're talking about a thirty-nine million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and two dollars budget that takes into account water and sewer needs. Counselor Lallant, I just wanted to see if there were any people that had questions on the budget before approving it. I had a couple of discussions with certain individuals, whether or not, well, to determine whether or not there was a will to go forward with what I wished to go ahead with. Our bylaw enforcement office does not have a confidentially, confidential system right now. It makes use of a report based of a reporting or an issuance report. I'm sorry, let me take a step back and say, they're relying on a system that turns out report that doesn't guarantee confidentiality. Now, I'm wondering if we could come up with a fifteen thousand dollar amount to ensure that a safe or at least a confidential system be used. They really need this because they don't have that tool to work with and it's a very good tool to work with. I discussed this with Mrs. Collier. Mrs. Collier, have you got an answer for this? Well, Mr. Mayor, there's, we have been trying to use the WordTech system, but we've had difficulty ensuring that that system is secure for all those other members viewing information on the file. There are not many files that are considered as confidential within the bylaw department. But, but the requirement to have a security system is definitely there and we have to look at potentially amending another project, potentially the file project, for example, to take maybe fifteen thousand dollars and assign that for the bylaw system. Just a simple question. Can anyone in the city find out who the complainant is on a certain call that is generated through that bylaw? Can anybody have access to whomsoever is calling in to make a complaint or is it, do they have to, is it, is it restricted by bylaw? So, a service has, any services have access to this? I think that we have to, you know, if a complainant wishes to remain anonymous, well, they can, but now they can't. Sometimes they, you know, there's some complainants fear retaliation and I believe that Mr. Daou, who's manager of our bylaw operation, is entering into discussions with a company at present with regards to the free development, deployment of body cameras and a free system of confidentiality of files that the city of Russell has implemented for a very minimal amount of money. From what I hear, it's going very well. I agree with Mr. Zant that we should maybe look into shifting some money either from the protection services department to either put something aside or at least remember that we should have a cost set aside for us to do this and it should be done as soon as possible. Well, let's ask that the report be done on this then. Well, I believe that it's already been looked into. Mr. Daou maybe has information for us and then can come back to council and inform us as to what can be done. Yes, we can make a recommendation at that time if we want to offset the cost vis a vis another capital project at that time, but office, we have to go through the tender process. I didn't want to get into a situation right now where we discuss a certain amount of money right now, but I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of the difficulty. Yes, well, we can switch during the year, but don't spend your own envelope, you know? No, no, I won't. Just before Mr. Lallant deals with the numbers involved, I see by the report the difference in between property taxes. We see the difference, the two point four six. I look at waste services now. I see that we're going from one eighty-nine to one ninety-four and the difference in the percent, differences states deferred. This is, this is the comment. Well, on November the twenty-second, of course, when we met, we wished to accommodate the discussions around commercial fees and we decided then that we were going to defer the waste fee increase, but the numbers, however, ma'am, are on the report, going from one eighty-nine to one ninety-four. What, what we're seeing is that the increase is deferred and should be discussed potentially in January or February. I see. I didn't want to leave it off so that it didn't appear that it would be missed, so we just put in the word deferred. Well, fine, thank you. Any other questions then? Any other questions? Before we go on to something else? Counselor Lallant, go ahead. For those people viewing it, we're talking about a, an increase of two point four six for property assessed at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. One thousand nine hundred and four dollars is tax paid out, so fifty-two point one percent of the municipal tax, thirty-two point six goes to the United Counties. School is fifteen point three percent. It's a total amount in the budget of thirty-nine million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and two dollars. This includes now water sewer services, seven million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and six dollars included in the seven million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. We have a nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars reserve and we say that eighty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six, ninety-three dollars is supported by taxes. We have a fourteen million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, thirty-eight dollars that was added on to the thirty-eight million dollar amount, capital expenditures. And these will be financed by different programs, either through federal or provincial grants obtained, long-term debt, reserve funds and growth. Major projects that are contemplated within the budget, number one, is the number one Burget Fire Hall or fire station. Of course, construction, fires of the construction station and paramedic station, reconstruction also of part of Saint Jacques Street and the coupling of the services, of the water services of Clarence and Burget and other operations. I thought we were dealing with the fire, the Rockland Fire Station. I know that Burget is on the list, but needs to be considered after negotiations. I don't believe that that's within the project as it stands right now. Well, it's, it's earmarked under capital expenditures. Yes, sir? Mr. Mayor, we received an email from the public library director. We might think of taking over that twenty thousand dollar amount that we decided to remove last week and to avoid reducing the level of service offered to residents at present. Is there a way, Mrs. Collier, I know we spoke earlier on, making use of our computer system of shifting financial burdens from one spot to another. Counselor Lallant? Even by removing the twenty thousand dollar amount, we're still contemplating an increase of nine point four, close to ten percent increase. Now, if you take a look at budgetary requirements for two thousand and fourteen, for that particular envelope and as compared to two thousand and seventeen, we're talking about a two hundred thousand dollar increase in that particular time span. I know that we've enacted cuts in many areas. I believe that we've encountered increases each and every year. We've encountered an eight percent increase. This year, we're encountering a ten percent increase with regards to that particular envelope. I know that we rely upon services of full-time services, employees. I know, but this is an excessively, extremely popular service. I've just brought that back to your attention for further consideration. I know that if members of town council are not behind this idea, I'll just let it, let it go. Well, Mr. Mayor, I congratulate you. It's a great report, but we're just massaging numbers here. We're looking at one particular item, but we're not taking a look at the effort deployed by a number of employees involved or the service offered to the population at large. I agree that since two thousand and nine, the services offered through the Clarence and Rockland Public Library are not, is not the same type of services offered. I think that we should make an effort to come up with twenty thousand dollars somewhere, somewhere, and to funnel it to the public library. I believe that everyone states that we have to have people properly apprenticed in reading and writing. We do have a great library system set up and we have to make use of it. I agree with what you're stating, but we have to resort to cuts and there's a certain amount of percentage that we wish to arrive at. I, I'm a great exponent of all services involved, but we came up with a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to promote public transportation, but that's all part and parcel of available services. Do we'll deal with those on a separate basis or together? Look, I figure that we could come up with twenty thousand dollars somewhere. We have to try and do something. It's like this lady had stated in her email, there's nothing in her budget that deals with, you know, broadening the scope of her operations or services. There's no fat contained in the budget that she's proposed to us. So of course, we have to, you know, offer a certain level of service, but when we, of course, when we're cutting one service and adding to another. Mr. Keogh, if we add twenty thousand dollars to the budget, how much higher would be the tax burden? Instead of two point four six? Two point four six, it would raise it to about two point five seven, Mr. Mayor. Either that or we take twenty thousand dollars less off of the pay as you go, for example, and put it in the, well, for what? Two hundred thousand dollars for the pay as you go? Correct. Well, I think that the other day, you stated that we had to look as to what needed to be done in the future. That's one of the solutions. Well, we're not putting in five percent as what we ought to be putting aside, you know, to ensure a proper future for all of our citizens. We're putting in, you know, four point nine two percent now aside instead of five percent. In any event, any other comments, Mr. Keogh? We're open for further discussions if you wish to enter into any discussions. No, Mr. Mayor, as we discussed with regard to the pay as you go, it's much too low to go over two hundred thousand. So it's up to council to decide. How about the country music festival? There's ten thousand dollars there already. Already? Would you rather educate them through our library services or sing them a song? Or we could just cut? Well, we have eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in the reserves for water and sewer. Well, we can't touch water and sewer. Well, the Riverfront Water Festival, we've set aside forty-five or forty-seven thousand dollars. Mr. Mayor, I would not use one-time money for this. This is an ongoing tax issue. We need to have money in reserve. If we did it for this year, then we're back next year with the same issue. So for ongoing items, I do not recommend using reserves. Hmm, so? We have a choice? Either two point four six or two point five seven? And we don't want to cut anywhere else, but we don't want to contemplate a tax increase. I'll ask for two votes. All right? Who's in favor of cutting twenty thousand dollars and begging that, and another one raising the tax at two point four six? Or you mean two, I'm sorry, two point five? Either cutting twenty thousand dollars and, now, who's in favor of leaving things as is? Not allowing an extra twenty thousand dollars for library services? Mr. Mayor, that given a forty million dollar budget, we can't come up with an extra twenty thousand dollars? I'm just giving you guys a choice here. Come on. Unless you've come up with a solution. Look, if you have a solution, well, that's fine. That's fine. I'm just wondering if we've put forward a necessary effort to come up with an extra twenty thousand dollars? Or do you want that the budget be revised and reworked in two weeks and see if twenty thousand dollars has been come up with? I think, Mr. Mayor, that we can come up with an extra twenty thousand dollars tonight. I came up with a solution. The onus is upon you to come up with another solution if you have one. Mr. Mayor, just a question. Mr. Keogh, when we discussed the budget, we spoke about eleven thousand dollars initially. Had we not pared that down to an eighty thousand dollar figure that we'd agreed upon? If we'd set down eighty thousand dollars, we're all were missing, all we're falling short of is ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Was it an eighty-nine thousand dollar figure that came into play? Yes, it was eighty-nine thousand dollars. Eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollar figure that came into play, but there was a nine thousand, five hundred dollars that was set aside with regards to the library salary that was not part and parcel of the initial ninety thousand dollars. But where did that difference come from? From taxes? From tax increases? Counselor Lallant? So we're really not playing, playing around with an eighty thousand dollar amount? If we're dealing with an eighty thousand dollar amount, then all we'd be short of would be a ten thousand, five hundred dollar amount. See, right now, we're increasing. Well, we're talking if, what, look, look, folks, folks, what we had option wise was this. There was an eighty thousand dollar amount that came into play. One of the options was to remove twenty thousand dollars. One of the options was to remove twenty-thousand dollars, and then the increase stands at sixty-thousand dollars. Councilor Zant? Let's come out with those documents. Well, you see, the nine-thousand-five-hundred-dollar figure was at the pegged initially in the budget to pay for the full-time salaries. I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around this. I find it hard here to think that we can't risk manage in the municipality twenty-thousand dollars out of a twenty-nine or thirty-nine-million-dollar budget. Now, with that being said, and without going into figures, we know that every time that we terminate employment, it costs money. I don't see anywhere in this budget where we have a pocket of money set aside for letting people go, which means that we do, throughout the year, find money. So we're asking for twenty-thousand dollars to get the library. If we can't risk manage this, and I find this, again, I'm not unaccounted, I find hard to, to wrap my head around the fact that we can't risk manage twenty-thousand dollars. I guarantee you that it'll be there by the end of the year. Very well-stated, Mr. Zant. Well, thank you. Thank you for your applause, I appreciate that, but well-stated. You know, look, the tax rate is where it stands. Mr. Mayor, we're not, of course, we're not criticizing town administration, but the solution is this, we have to come up with twenty-thousand dollars. Given a forty-million-dollar budget, we certainly will encounter a problem with, we can come up with creative accounting, Mr. Mayor, during the course of the year. And now, we're unable to come up with an extra twenty-thousand dollars this year to ensure that our children, adults, our retired individuals that make use of library services be well-served. My God, I find that hard to believe. Mr. Keogh? Mr. Mayor, Mayor, the staff will follow along with the will of council. I've never suggested, look, a budget, Mr. Mayor, is not about taking risks. A budget deals with specific items and specific items that are voted upon by council. So we can't proceed to a general cut based on something that might happen in the future. Council can direct staff to cut an amount if it's the will of council. It can be shared amongst departments, and if you can't find a line item that you want removed, you can ask each department to come up with, how many departments are we? Five out of twenty? That's big math, I'll get my calculator out, Mr. Mayor, but there could be a four-thousand cut out of one department. Council can do what you want. You can offer a pay-as-you-go, I offer that, this is a very low amount, you can offer that. Can we send it back and ask individual departments, push it to cuts? Well, why don't we just take twenty-thousand dollars out of the pay-as-you-go and throughout the year, when we obtain the quarterly items, we can decide, can we pay this back and can we not, and then we can put it back in? I can guarantee you that at the end of the year, there will be twenty-thousand dollars available. Let's risk manage the pay-as-you-go. How about that? It's not a gamble, it's not even a gamble, it's a sure bet. Well, we can do that, we can do that, obviously, we can do that. Further discussions? Are we in favor of that? Are we then in favor of that? So, let's take the twenty-thousand dollars as you pay, and if extra money is found during the year, it will be put back in the as-you-pay envelope, pay-as-you-go budgetary envelope. All we need to do is not to fire any people, and then we'll, we'll be okay. Well, look, all of our infrastructure-related programs are very, are quite properly budgeted, and sometimes they come in under budget, so, you know, it's certainly. So, let's have the resolution now that you wish to go through to adopt our bylaws? Yes. So we need to move, Mr. Simonneau, seconded by Mr. Lallon, all of those in favor of modifying the bylaw, removing the twenty-thousand dollars from the two-hundred-thousand-dollar pay-as-you-go budgetary envelope and add it in as the months go by, when extra money comes up. Fine. All of those are in favor of modifying it and to transfer the set amount to the operational library budget. Now, let's go on to the adoption of the budget. Councilor Lallon read the initial resolution. It was seconded by Councilor Zant. Yes, moved, seconded, I'm sorry, yes, that's for the budget now. All those in favor of adopting the budget? Thank you. As presented, good job, good job. See, you got your twenty-thousand back, even though I sounded negative, somebody's got to do it, because then they can all pick on me. I'm the biggest one of the gang here that they can pick on, the broadest shoulders. Well, all right then, yeah, it's nice to be loved, isn't it, Mr. Mayor? Yes, yes, let's go on, let's go on, folks. Mr. Mayor, beat resulted the following bylaw be adopted. Twelve-point-one, bylaw 2016 dash one sixty-five to establish a reserve fund for the Utawa River Festival, as well as twelve-point-two, bylaw 2016 dash one forty-six to authorize the purchase of a snowblower. All right? Is everyone in favor of what has been read? Yes? If someone wishes to withdraw any other items? No? That's fine, fine. Seconded by Councilor Zant, all those in favor? Carry then, fine, fine, fine. All right, all right then. Confirmatory bylaw, beat resolved, that bylaw 2016 dash one sixty-six being a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of Town Council held on the fifth of December be adopted. Seconded by Councilor Zant, thank you. Agreement called at eight-twenty-eight P.M. Thank you very much then.